... meeting and 2010 budget review, September 1st, 5 o'clock. Amber, if we could do a roll call.
Martinson.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
Costello.
Here.
LaCroy.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Hattcock.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Amber. As Jim mentioned, the school board meeting will be here Thursday, so we don't have no meeting for Thursday. We do have another meeting set for tomorrow night if we need it, and next week if we need it. I want to thank all the council for their work last night. They hashed through all the -- they got the elephant out of the room and wanted to get the work done, and they did that, so I appreciate that. The work -- where we started to go last night was we started to go over the unfunded list, and some of the comments that I had gotten from the council was that maybe we should just start with Mayor Hanks's recommendations and maybe approve that, put that on the board, see what other councils want to add on to that, and work down from that. If that's the council's desire, I'd look for a motion to accept the recommendations from the mayor, and then we'll go around the room and ask if you want to add anything on the unfunded list. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
One thing I do want to mention before -- what's that?
Opposed.
Oh, all opposed?
No.
We got one no with Alderman. One of the comments that I do want to make on this proposal, from my understanding, the way this was brought forward, is Mayor Hanks and the department heads, in your book, there's an unfunded 2010 budget request from department heads, so they had a request of up to $1.4 million. And from my understanding, they got together, and between 11 of them, 12 of them altogether, they come up with a priority list, and that's what Mr. Hanks's priority list. The only two that Mr. Hanks added on there on his own was Mountain View Cemetery resetting the paving for $50,000, and Storybook Island for pathways for $50,000. I just wanted to clarify that before we get started. And from that, I'd like to just go around the table, and if you've got something to add, Tracy will add it to the list. I know this is kind of short notice, Tracy, because you started out with the major unfunded list yesterday, last night, but if you got that, we'd like to do that. So I'd start off with Ms. Martinson. Add -- did you have anything on the unfunded list you want to add?
Do you have Malcolm have questions?
I'll recognize Alderman and Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question, you made a comment that we took the mayor's list and just put that on the board, but you said the only difference was a couple of things, but if we're going to work off the unfunded list or the -- are we working off of any of the lists of the department heads?
What we did is the department heads and then came -- and the mayor came up with these priorities, except for two of them. And so the thought process is, is the council goes through the other, maybe they feel the other ones, something on the unfunded request list is more important, or they want to add that and have discussion on it, then add that to the unfunded list as we go around. I don't know, Malcolm got his answers? Does he have a follow-up?
Yeah, I guess my -- they're different. I say that just because the mayor has FTEs on here, and I think that the finance office is going to ask us to approve FTEs, because I think the council needs to approve those, and there are FTEs in here. And the mayor, if they're prioritized, or maybe he just put them in terms of the dollar amount, but he has one as an assistant city attorney, and two park maintenance workers, and the department heads have something different. They have the city attorney, and two, they have someone for the finance office. Am I correct?
I'll recognize Mayor Hanks.
Thank you. Malcolm, it's a good question. What we did was, this list, the unfunded 2010 budget request from department heads, this was a working document that the council asked me for, so I provided it. This was the original draft of trying to go through the priorities. This was sort of the wish list. If money was no object, what would you put on the list? So this was actually a working document, and the final determination as far as priorities was what you see right here. Okay. So, I mean, you're certainly welcome to rearrange things, but just, you know, this question, I think we addressed last night also. This is nothing more than a working document that the council requested, because they wanted to make sure that they had all the different items that the council or the department heads had brought forward as far as potentially funding from the wish list.
Okay.
Next, I'll recognize Alderman and Deb Hattcock.
Did they add all the things that we added last night on to -- we have a list of that?
We kind of started out different and then went on to something else, so whatever you wanted to add, please add it.
Did it add it?
Please add it.
Again?
Yes.
Okay, and hopefully not being too offensive. If the mayor doesn't want to take the CPI but has a wish list on his, that doesn't seem right to add his on there. If it was something that he really didn't want, I understand that he knows best on some of this stuff, but if you're not wanting to accept the CPI on there, then it should be up to the council at this point, and we should add those things, I think, to be fair. So, maybe that's just me, not hopefully it should be means the mayor, it's not something mean, I don't think. It's just something that when you're doing and not accepting the CPI in the budget, in a sense, then the department heads should have that wish list and tell them the council these. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hattcock. Did you want to add anything to the unfunded list?
I think that two, did we have two? Well, they have three parks and recreation people.
You want three instead of two?
Nope, it says three on here, but so we'll leave it at three for now. What list are we working off of?
On the mayor's unfunded, it's for two.
So are we going by the mayor's or are we going by this list?
We approved this recommendation from the mayor, but as I stated, this is, the department heads and the mayor came up with this list, except for two items on this, and that was the Storybook Island and the Mountain View Cemetery. Those are two that Mr. Hanks added himself. My thought process is on this is, you know, this is like a short list of the other one that you've just seen, and we can go through this, and as we go around, if I'm the second one from the unfunded, from the department heads, if you see something you want to add on there, we can add that on there. We get a total, figure out where we're at, try to find the funding for it, go that way. I think last night you wanted the LNI for $1,500, Deb. You just don't want the LNI for $1,500?
No.
No? Vice President Malcolm Chapman?
Just a question, we voted to put this list on, right, as opposed to the other one?
Yes. To work off of, and then we can add on or subtract, yeah.
I guess I didn't say anything when we voted, but if we could reconsider, because, I mean, I tend to agree with Councilmember Hattcock in that if the mayor thought that these were important enough to somehow put in the budget, then maybe we should have found a way, not to be argumentative, but at the same time, the mayor has proposed his budget, it's up to us now, so I would like to not start from a place of what he didn't put in the budget, but in terms of what we'd like to see in the budget or any changes to this. Now, I'm not going to say that we won't get to this point that some of these things won't be included, but if we're going to start working on his budget then, why would we start with just putting all of this in there without any money to approve any of these things at this point? So, I'd like to reconsider the vote, because I'd like to, and maybe it's not that important, but I'd like to say no to this and then have a starting point. I mean, if it passed, it will still pass, and that's still where we're going to start, but I'd like to be on record of saying no to this request initially.
Is there a motion?
Someone in the minority would have to reconsider.
Yeah, I have no reconsider.
Yeah, I mean, all of this.
Motion's been made to reconsider, is there a second? There's been a second? Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? One opposed from -- you're used to saying no. Okay, so unanimous vote to reconsider? Okay, back on the floor is the original motion to accept, to work off the short list from the mayor, and I guess I'd open that up, from what my understanding, what Malcolm's talking about is you want to start through the unfunded 2010 budget request from department heads, and is it your thought process to go down to each one and take a vote? I'll recognize Vice President Malcolm Chapman.
No, maybe I'm just being a little nitpicky. My point of this was just to be on the side of saying no, and I understand that that's where we'll still start, because there were enough votes. As far as I'm concerned, someone could put the motion back on the floor to start with the mayor's list, I just wanted to say no to that, that's all.
I'll recognize Alderman and Deb Hattcock.
Well, the year before, what we did is we just added everything we wanted on there. We didn't start with anybody's list. It started with the council members, and then you guys writing stuff down and putting it on the overhead. It has nothing to do with the mayor's list, or my list, or anybody. We can read off this list or the mayor's list, whatever they want, and we put, as council members, what we feel should be on there. There was no list made except from council members. It was a lot easier, we had our priorities set, and then after that, we took off or added to what we wanted. I think it's easier, and I'll be saying no as well, because I think it's easier for council members to make that decision and not have somebody else's wish list that was already, again, should have been put in the budget if it was something that was a priority. And I think some of these things, we can work back into the budget, and other things we'll probably have to pay with unencumbered cash, I guess is a good way to put it. So, how we start that, I think it's easier by council members, and I would make that motion, or how you make that motion, by starting the list by council members of what they think are priorities and should be on the list. I think that's easier to work off, and if that happens to be some of the things that is on the mayor's list or this unfunded 2010 budget request from department heads, so be it. I think it's a lot easier.
From my understanding, you're asking for a motion to go through and ask the council what they want to add to the unfunded list?
What the priority list is.
For their priority list. There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to go around the table and have the council put, add to the unfunded list our priorities. Any discussion? Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for Jason Green. We moved to reconsider a vote, now we're setting a whole different motion. I mean, I'm not sure I understand what's going on here.
Mr. Chairman, my understanding is that the motion was on how you're going to proceed to evaluate the material before you, so I think the motion that's on the floor is appropriate. You reconsidered the prior decision to start with the mayor's items. Now you're going a different track. I think that's appropriate.
Oh, okay, I thought we had to vote, re-vote or something. We don't have to do that?
You reconsidered the previous decision, now you're, as I understand the motion on the floor, you're considering going a different way. So I think it's appropriate.
Oh, you're fine with it, okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So what we'll do is we'll go around and ask what each council member wants to put on the priority list. Start with Patty Martinson.
I guess my priority would be the two, the parks and recreation, the imaging system for both the departments, and the same amount of money that was granted last year. We didn't hear the last side. We ought to keep the last side. There you go.
Oh, sorry, that would be the $2,000 for the front porch coalition. That was the same amount we granted last year as part of the whole CPI thing.
And the other one. I heard she just turned away.
So let me get that right, you had the two parks worker, the city attorney, $2,000 for the front porch coalition, and the imaging system for $65,000, right? Is that all, Patty? Ms. Hattcock?
On here, you have imaging system 75, and then on the other one, you have 65. Do you have a total for imaging system?
Mr. Hanks?
Thank you, Mr. President. There again, we haven't actually gone out for bid, so it's, whether it's 65,000 or 75,000, it's sort of a guess right now. I think we believe for 65,000, we can get what we need.
Thank you, Mr. Hanks. And we do have the two parks. I'm satisfied with that.
Vice President Malcolm Chapman? Alderman, Karen Anderson-Olson, please.
Yeah, yes.
You're okay?
Yep.
Alderman, Sam Quaker? You're okay? Alderman, Ron Kroger?
We're going into our reserves, how much now after we put the CIP back into reserves? 2.6 million? Somewhere in that area there? Or 2 million?
2.1 million. It should have been on the spreadsheet that was on your --
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Recognize Jim.
Can I clarify, when you say going into reserve, we're not really going into a reserve, we're using unencumbered cash. The reserve, when you say reserve, that's the 15% of the --
Right, well, basically, unencumbered cash is reserve. I guess my comment is this, is, you know, right now, we have a balanced budget. We're going into our reserves 2.1 million or whatever it is. We all know sales tax revenue is down today, we don't know where it's going to hit. So, in my opinion, pardon, we need to stay where we're at, and if somewhere down the line, the end of this year, first part of next year, sales tax revenue is up, we can go into our unencumbered cash or our reserve and fund something, but to start throwing a bunch of dollars out here to pile onto the budget at this point in time with what's taking place around Rapid City and the nation, I think, is foolish. So, at this point in time, I'm not interested in adding anything onto the current budget that's in place.
Thank you, Ron. I'll recognize Vice President Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would tend to agree with Ron, but I thought the exercise that we were going through was just to add, and at some point, we'd come back and say where we're getting that money from, or am I mistaken?
No, you're right on.
Because, I mean, the $50,000 that I said, let's add into, I, there's $50,000 in the budget that I've identified that I could recommend that we take it from, so mine is a zero, I mean, is a one-to-one match.
If that's fine, I can support some of that.
Okay. But if we're going to go through that exercise of then coming back around to say where should we get these from, I'm in support of doing that as well.
Thank you. Alderman, Ron Weifenbach?
I mean, I have a whole big wish list, but I haven't gotten through all the numbers, I haven't got proposals, but I'd get a new park and maybe get some new roads over there in Ward 1, new park, some reconstruction of our Fairmont Street dump site, but I don't have the numbers for all that stuff, but other than that, I'm not adding anything.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. White. He didn't add anything. Alderman, Aaron Costello?
I have nothing to add right now.
Thank you. Alderman, Bill Wall?
I have nothing to add.
I will, I'll recognize the mayor, Aldman.
Thank you, Mr. President. What's being passed around, I think you actually had in your packet for today, but I just wanted to make sure you got a copy, because everybody seems to have stacks and stacks of paper. Every year, when we approve the budget, we actually use a specific dollar amount, which is an undesigned funded. If you actually go back looking at 2004, this year, the proposal, and my understanding is, this is adjusted for the CPI. If you actually look, with the exception of 2009, it's the lowest dollar amount that we're going to use as far as unencumbered cash, going back to 2004. I absolutely appreciate the fact that everyone wants to be absolutely as conservative as possible. I just want you to understand that this budget is extremely conservative, and compared to previous years, both 2006, '07, and including 2008, we're spending half of what we were in the previous budgets as far as the unencumbered cash, which is the unspent balance of the budgeted dollar amount from the previous year. Now, keep in mind, one of the reasons that dollar amount isn't actually lower is the fact that we were projecting a one-plus-one budget. Now, if we would have actually projected a four-plus-four, as far as our revenue from our sales tax, as we have previously, that dollar amount would have gone down dramatically. But we were ultra-conservative in our revenue projections, and that's the only reason it's even at 2.1. So, I understand everyone's concern, I just want to make sure everyone understands where we're at compared to where we've been in the past. We're spending about half of the unencumbered cash compared to where we have in previous budgets, going back to 2004.
Thank you, Mayor. Tracy, have you got that worked yet?
Did you?
Yes, I've got two items. One would be the 42,000, 247 for dispatch, and 27, 257 for city-county alcohol and drugs. It's 27, 257 for city-county alcohol, and dispatch, 42,000, 247. Yeah, that's add to the list. So the subtotal, so the subtotal, Tracy, is $328,804?
Yes.
I guess next, what we'll do is go down each item, and if everybody can kind of remember where they were, we can make the suggestions where that funding would come from. I'll start with Patty. Council contingency are undesigned. For which items, Patty? Yeah, there is enough money in council to fund each one. Unencumbered cash. And I think Mr. Chapman had Storybook Island, he had an option for funding for that, so I'll recognize, oh, Deb, did you have something?
Yeah.
I'll recognize Deb Hattcock.
Well, council contingency, we have 200 for next year, and I figure we could use 50 from that, and then economic development for 25, because we usually give them 225, and we're giving them 250. $75,000, right there, does our park to maintenance. Out of everything we've done this year, that's been the hugest issue, I think, that we've added more land and more events and more stuff to, that if we needed someone in that area more than anywhere else that I've seen, because I don't know if anybody's seen what land we've added the last few years and how many more events we did, that would cover those two parks and recties, so I don't know how we do that or if we have to put it in a motion, but that's $75,000 to take care of those two right out of the budget we have.
I think what we'll do is have Tracy put it down on the two items that you want, how you identified it, and then when we get back through, we'll go through each one and vote on it and have discussion to where that's where they feel it's appropriate, the funding should come from.
And then I also feel that we have extra, maybe not a whole lot extra, in some of the travel that we have, because we've added more where we took. We had $25,000 for all of us, and then we added another three, and then eight for Mayor Hanks, and I think if we wanted to find some of that, I don't know how much you wanted to take, but I think council travel is important, but I think we can take some of that down since we've taken, we did have Hanks on there when we had the $25,000 on there, so now it's like almost 28. So, there's some extra, I think, a little bit there, too.
I guess I'm kind of lost on that, Tracy.
Which, I'd say there's about, added three.
Because you're talking about taking...
Well, I guess, what do we add for council travel right now? Right, this year? I mean, how much have we used? Okay.
Before you, if I may, Mr. President. Just, you know, because this question came up earlier. We've used about half of the council travel, but if you actually project out the trips that people have already booked for, we pretty much spent the entire budget.
Okay, thank you, then I'll leave it alone.
So Deb, some funding that you've identified is $25,000 from economic development.
And $50,000 from council contingencies, so that'd make that a total of 75.
Is there a certain item you wanted to place that on or just leave that up there?
Two FTEs for the park.
So that'd be...
And if you look on council contingency, they say they use it for snow removal, but if you look through the list of what we spent it on since 2006, it also shows that we haven't used it since 2006 for snow removal. That leaves us 100... That leaves us a hundred and fifty thousand still in there.
Okay.
For council contingency.
So, I think what we need to do, Tracy, is, is we had one person who wanted to have that income cash slash twenty-five from, from, uh, economic development and slash fifty from council contingency. We're kind of gonna go down, did you have a comment?
Why is that question dropped?
I'll, I'll recognize Karen Gunderson.
My question was, with the contingency that Deb was talking about, we have had not much snow in those previous years. I, I don't know what we spent this year, and I don't, don't know exactly what the Farmer's Alman Act tells us is going to be the snow for this year. I mean, I would just want to know a little discussion about that to make sure we can flower our roads, because that'll be important.
I, I, yeah, I, I don't know. Can you? I'll recognize Mayor Exwell.
Thank you. Keep, keep in mind, we have three major blizzards this spring. We budget approximately a million dollars a year for snow removal, and to this point, I'm a little like a robber, but I think we're over three-quarters of a million dollars that we've already spent. We have just enough room for one more blizzard. If we get to two, we're gonna be short. Just about every one of those events that we had this year, by the time we go out and actually pay our crews, pay for the materials, and actually pay for the contractors, it was about a quarter million dollars per event. Robert, is that right? So, we have about, we have about twenty-five percent of our total budget left, and that has to get us to the end of the year.
Alderman Ron Wytham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question that I don't think got resolved last night in reference to the stormwater drainage fund. Was that accounted for in this budget, or is that, so that's, I mean, that went into the general fund, and then? Okay, so, all right, thanks.
Okay. Ms. Hackock, you, do you have a follow-up, any more?
No, it's just that if you look at that since two thousand six, we added extra fifty in there, and if we have snow removal, I thought we added more. Seems like at this point, we've had some major blizzards this year, but we seem to do well at the end of the year, and we have encumbered cash. If that's what we need at the end to use for blizzards, that's a have-to item, so I'm okay with that.
Thank you, Ms. Hackock. I'll recognize Vice President Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think to give a fuller perspective to that, the reason why there's still so much money in council contingency this year, the council recommended that we take money for those snowstorms out of unencumbered cash. So, that council contingency money would be gone if we used it for snow removal. I think we ordered it out of unencumbered cash, so it's not a true reflection on how we pay for snowstorms as it relates to council contingency.
Okay.
My, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, thank you, and, and now you, you've got the chance to find the funding for Storybook Island.
Um, like everyone else, I'm going to council contingency first. I, I think that fifty thousand can come out of council contingency for that. I'm comfortable doing that. And then I had a question for the mayor about the travel. When I looked at it the last time, I, I think it's accurate that about half of the money that's allocated for the mayor's office and the council, about half of that money is gone for two thousand nine, and the mayor says if we look what's programmed out for the rest of the year, almost all of that money's gone. The only request that I know that's come forward thus far is for Alderman LaCroy to go to Boston to the Youth and Families Conference. No one has yet put in for the Fall Conference in San Antonio. No council member has yet put in, or at least on this legal and finance, it's not there, for the Municipal League in October. So, I'm just wondering where is, that's not on our legal and finance yet. What was on legal and finance was for Jason Green and someone else, it was, it said not a single council member's name was on that legal and finance agenda. So, I'm just wondering, where's the rest of that thirteen thou, or that twelve thousand? How is it programmed out?
Thank, thank you. Kay actually tracks all the people, and she actually sends out requests for people that are interested in going to the different events, and based upon the responses we've gotten back from the council, what I'm being told is we've pretty much spent out the twenty-five thousand dollars. I, my apologies, Malcolm, I can't give you the dates, but you know, Kay, Kay can give that to you in the morning, because I know we looked at that. The vast majority of it is spent.
If it's in your, I mean, we just, I haven't seen it yet, it hasn't come through the council yet, so, okay.
No, it hasn't.
Okay. Okay. Lloyd, if I can make one other comment before we move on. I, I applaud the mayor and the department heads for coming up with a budget where, I mean, we reduced that from how we've done it in the past, of four percent plus four percent on that last year's actual, the last closed year's actual, and I applaud them for the one percent and one percent. I think if you look at that total one percent and one percent, what that adds up to is that we're saying sales tax receipts have to come in about four hundred thousand dollars above that last closed year, which I think that we will do. I think that the city will do, even in rough economic times, so I feel comfortable with that. But also being, and looking at budgeting and looking at trending, I would recommend that we hold off on adding these FTEs. If we think that the numbers are gonna come in greater than that, then add the FTEs as we go throughout the year, or add some of these things as we go throughout the year. If there's something on here that needs to get done to keep something open, I'm saying, and I'm advocating for what I put on the board, Storybook Island, then I would say those sorts of things, one-time purchases now, and then look at those other things, adding that one point four million that was recommended, that didn't have money for yet. Let's do that as money comes in throughout the year, and ask department heads when they come forward to say, I need this now, that we bump it back off of this unfunded list throughout the course of the year. So, there is some priority. We're not just adding things throughout the year, but we're adding things that we didn't get through, through the budget cycle. So, those would be my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Next, I'll recognize Alderman Karen Gunderson. Did you have anything, Karen? Alderman Sam Quaker. Ron Wytham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that there's been some important things pointed out, and the fact that we voted last night to add the CPI to the unencumbered cash for the possibility of spending it, which goes against all my, my point of senses. It goes against all my point of senses to sit here and say that, though we know our sales tax revenue at this point is down three percent, and I'm, I'm looking for Jim to, and the finance officer, to tell me how much dollar amount that is right now that we're down year-to-date.
You have to pack three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
So, our, our...
That's three percent?
Three point two one.
Three point two one, so now we're looking at adding on other expenses to an already balanced budget. It was against my wishes to raise the property taxes. Evidently, we'll, we'll be voting on it again to make that final or not final, but I'm not gonna sit here and, and add on anything extra to money that we don't even have, or speculate that we may have. I think the conservative budget's been put forward. I think we should live with it, and as time goes on, if there's opportunity that, that things do change and the economy turns, I think that you will find that when people have money in their pocket, and they have disposable money, they'll spend it, the sales tax revenues will then increase, the money will be available, and at that point, if there's something that's needed, looking up here, I think that these are all things that, what's been referred to as a wish list, is, is things that we could buy without. So, that, that's how I feel about it, I won't be adding anything to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. I do, I'll recognize Alderman Karen Gunderson.
Since we have talked about the CPI, I feel it's important in this discussion that the, my colleagues at least consider the idea that the reason for the CPI is the realization that the real cost of doing business as a government has gone up via inflation. And therefore, our real costs of doing business ha, have, have gone higher. And I rec, I understand Mr. Wytham's concerns about that, but I also understand that we as elected officials who represent our various constituencies throughout the community, we have an obligation to make sure that this governing body who makes these decisions does so wisely. And when we do not take that opportunity, which is given to us by, legally by the state of South Dakota, to do, we in fact are saying to our constituents, we are subsidizing you for this year. And ultimately, we will find ourselves, if this happens often, we would then find that we are shortchanging, in other words, we are asking the future to pay for the cost of doing business right now. And I, as an elected official, in my own mind, weigh that short-term against that future obligation that we are passing on. And so, I think it's important, as we consider this discussion, to consider what Mr. Wytham has included, which is the immediate concerns of our community, but I think we mustn't forget our long-term obligation to not place our city in the financial situation of being behind. And so, as I look at this, this is a very important issue for me, as we fulfill our duty to our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Erin, did you have a?
My comments are, is, I think that the council's working very hard. I think the trend that it's going is, I'm, I'm not sure which way it's gonna go, but I, I think you guys are all being very conservative and looking out for the taxpayers. The two that I put on the list, you know, a couple people mentioned where they'd find the funding from, and that's exactly where I would've gotten them from. So, what I will put on my list is, the two that I did would come from undesignedated fund balance. So, that would be the detox and the dispatch would come from the undesignedated fund balance.
Mr. LaCroy?
I'll recognize Vice President Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I agree, everyone's being conservative, then can I start swiping some stuff off the list?
Sure.
Well, let me just appeal to the council, then, and then the council can do what it will. And I know this is a small amount, but I think we're gonna have to go through this process somehow of coming up with three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and four dollars right now. But let me just start by saying, the Front Porch Coalition, it's two thousand dollars, and that's a small amount of money, but last year, the Front Porch Coalition was in the subsidy part of the budget for two thousand dollars. So, I, I think, and I hear Patty saying that that's important, I'll be involved in those subsidy discussions, as will the mayor, as will Council President LaCroy, that was in the budget, that's kind of in there already, assume that it's in there, that hundred thousand has been put aside for subsidies, even though we haven't said who, who's gonna get what yet. But that's kind of in the budget already. So, I'm just thinking, if we're looking to start taking things off of the list, that's one that I would recommend that we take off, because I think it is, or potentially addressed somewhere else already in the budget.
So, that, Patty, you okay with that, the council? So, we'll remove Front Porch Coalition, which probably take a vote on it since it's on the list.
I'll make a motion to take the Front Porch Coalition off of the, the wish list.
Motion's been made and seconded to take the Front Porch Coalition off the list. Any further discussion? Say none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Oh.
No, I just have another...
Oh, okay. I'll recognize Vice President Malcolm Chapman.
I wasn't here last night, so I'm trying to make up for it. Just a question for the mayor. I recommended that we put Storybook Island on, because I, my understanding in, in talking to them was that there was more money that was needed, and I thought for the operations of Storybook Island, but I see this as being pathways. Is that sidewalks? Then I would also recommend that we strike Storybook Island.
Motion's ma, made and seconded to strike Storybook Island. Any further discussion? I'll recognize Alderman Deb Hackock.
When we were discussing fifty thousand for a park, and, and we were coming up with that money, as I recall, we were putting together fifty thousand. How did we put that money together, and can we use what we were putting together for that park for the Storybook Island pathways? I guess I, I need to know where all those three, and there was three different areas that we were getting that money from. I would like to go back to those three different areas and fund Storybook Island from our regular budget, being done the same way as how we were finding fifty thousand to buy an area in Rapid City that we ended up not getting.
Are you asking me?
I don't know if you remember where those three areas were, but maybe you don't, Malcolm, I, maybe...
I think this is apples and oranges a little bit, in that you're, you're talking about money that we were gonna find in the two thousand nine...
That we found.
In the two thousand nine.
Yes.
We're talking about two thousand ten, which is a different place. So, that money's not necessarily there in two thousand ten.
Okay, so maybe I, I need to wait. Okay. And then the other thing I was going to say was, and I'm glad you had struck that in a sense, because I think what is important is, if you're going to have and add, again, parks and rec and different stuff, and I think out of all the areas that we've added this year, that's been the number one thing that we've added the most to take care of. I think that's why I think it's important at a council contingency, it's a have-to kind of thing, and not a wish list for a Parks Director, when we are the ones making the difference in his area for changes of events and things that we do to his budget. So, I don't particularly like growing government in a sense, but I also don't like leaving people hanging after we did make the workload a lot bigger, and then leave them saying, make it work. So, that's why I think it's important on the council contingency and the economic development, which we have gave two hundred and twenty-five thousand every year. I think we won't be hurting them by taking that twenty-five back to make something that we added to our budget work, so, again.
Thank you, Deb. The feeling that I'm getting from the council is, oh, motion on the floors to strike the Storybook Island. Any further discussion? All in favor, any to give a say in aye? All opposed? Motion carries. We have, I'll recognize Alderman Ron Crower.
I just, I just need clarification, is the undesignedated fund balance, is that the same un, un, and...
I'll recognize Mayor Allen Hicks.
Thank you. I just, I thought I should chime in on one thing. If you, if you notice up on the board, there are two things. One is the imaging system for sixty-five thousand, the other is that Assistant City Attorney. I just want to let you know that the staff was very adamant that their number one priority as, as far as going through this whole process, was getting that second, or that additional staff attorney. Prior, on top, I mean, that was the number one from every single department head, because they're, we're starting to fall behind, so I guess my suggestion is if you're, if, if you, if you're, you're looking at whether or not to purchase the imaging equipment or putting that additional staff attorney on, I'm gonna tell you, the staff felt it was very important, that that was the number one priority. So, if you want to keep either.
Thank you, Ms. Aigs. I'll recognize Vice President Malcolm Chapman.
Just a question for the mayor. If those dollars up there that we put on the board are competing against each other, in your mind, then the assistant or the assistant city attorney is not competing against the park workers? I mean...
I think it is.
But you went to say, if we're looking at the imaging system versus the assistant city attorney, do the assistant city attorney?
Yes.
But not the other, not the park workers?
Well, my understanding was there, there was a consensus on the council that you wanted to move forward with those two FTEs. to move forward with those two FTEs, as far as the park works. But we hadn't entered the discussion as far as the assistant city attorney. And I just wanted to let you know that, there again, the department directors felt strongly, of everything that was on their wish list, that assistance, additional assistant city attorney rose to the top, whether it was an FTE or one-time purchase, that was the number one priority.
I recognize Devin Hattcock.
So I'll put the motion on the floor. I'm finding it in the budget, and that was from CPI for the wish list of the assistant attorney. Not that I don't think that's important, but my motion would be to take $50,000 from council contingency, and $25,000 for economic development, and fund two FTEs for the parks.
We added it, we hadn't voted on it. So the motion on the floor is for the two park workers, and the funding source would be $25,000 from economic development, $50,000 from council contingency. There's not, I haven't gotten a second for that yet.
I'll second.
There's been a second discussion, I'll recognize Malcolm Chapman.
I'm a little confused. Are you saying to take something off? Or, I'm a little...
The motion to fund those two that are on our list. You took the $50,000 for the front porch, we didn't need it, and I'm making a motion to how to fund the two of the FTEs.
I think I'm still a little confused in the process, because, I mean, there's still other things up, so are then we gonna vote on those other things individually as well?
I think what Malcolm's getting at is, I think we originally started out, we're gonna go through the list and eliminate what we don't want, then come back and find the funding? Is that what?
That's what I'm asking. So now, if we, if we do what Deb is recommending, and we think that other things on the list are important, and you're saying that somebody else has to go through it, what if someone else says, "I think that what's important is dispatch and detox, and I think that we should get that money from council contingency, that same $50,000 that you're recommending"?
At least there was some kind of cash, that's where Lloyd said he was making his decisions at.
Okay. You okay?
Yes. I think it's a little premature to start voting specifically dollar amounts from certain places to certain things, but sure.
I think what we originally started out with is, if you were gonna bring something up, you identify a place where it's coming from, and what Deb's doing is, she identified those, and she wants to use them. If the council wants to vote it down, because they don't wanna use it from those areas, I don't think they're, they're not voting down that that's not important, we'll have to figure that out afterwards. I seen a hand from Alderman Sam Quaker, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that rather than spending more money at this point, I think it would be better to identify trigger points next year, based on hopefully improved sales tax returns. And here's why I say this, is we have, right now, we're 3.21% down. We're hoping that we'll have some good checks here from the rally, but we just don't know how that's going to turn out. So if you take the minus 3.21%, and you assume for a moment that it's going to stay at 3.21% through the remainder of 2009, and you take that negative 3.21%, when actually next year's budget needed a plus one, and that means we're down 4.21%. And maybe we need to discuss further at some other point, but we might, we'd be down even further if you look at what we had budgeted for the '09 budgets. We don't know what all the departments will, will turn back, and we don't know how the minus 3.21% will factor in, because we had budgeted, the council, the city had budgeted a positive four for 2009. So my suggestion is to wait until March or April of next year, when we'll have a pretty good idea of how 2009 ended up, and then determine whether we want to hire these employees and do these other things. If we pull the trigger on hiring early March, we can still, I know there's a training period, but we can still post the requisitions and have these new employees in place for most of the summer. So, I strongly recommend that we not do this tonight, we keep it on the radar screen, and we delay all of these items until, until spring.
Thank you.
Can I offer a motion on that, or is it best to just? I guess I'd like to see what the rest of the council thinks.
Okay. Yeah, we got Ms. Hattcock's motion on the floor, as it stands for this two, so...
Is that out of order? Can I ask the city attorney, is that, would that, that motion be pertinent? Or is it best to defeat this motion and state that it would need to come back at a later time? How do I keep it alive?
Mr. Chairman. I recognize Jason Green.
Thank you. You know, the process you're describing, you know, really doesn't fit within the budget ordinance. It's really a decision about the implementation of the ordinance once it's passed. I think it's probably appropriate to discuss if you wanna do that, to keep that in the minds of the council. But really, it's a separate action from the budget that probably belongs as a resolution or something that might be a companion item, once the ordinance is, is prepared.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, Sam Quaker.
So, could we put the spots in the, in the budget with, with delayed funding, and let's make it effective April 1, and then if we find out in March that things aren't going in the right direction, then we can come back and change it?
Well, I think you could do that. I think it's probably a better practice to fund them for the whole year, and approve a resolution saying that you're not gonna hire anybody until April 1st, so the funding's in place, so you get a true picture in the following year of your, your budget, and so that the money's there. But that's really your decision.
Okay. I'll recognize Mayor Alan Hicks.
Thank you. You know, one of the things, and not, not to suggest one, but I think what Alderman Quaker's trying to do is, is say, leave the budget where it's at, and then deal with the $369,000. And I think the more appropriate way to do that, instead of trying to guesstimate whether or not it's gonna be in there, is just do supplementals in 2010. If the money's there, you can do supplementals. If the money isn't there, you just don't do any.
This motion is not with $369,000, so why are you suggesting on the motion?
I'm trying to, we're trying to find alternatives to fund what you're asking.
Well, it's in the budget, I take the budget that's 2010, not $369,000 cash.
I know, and I don't wanna do that.
Okay. I think, I think Ms. Hattcock's got a point, there is a motion on the floor, let's vote on that, and then we can get into the discussion on the further. So the motion on the floor is to fund the two parks departments' employees, $25,000 from economic development, and $50,000 from council contingency. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. So Amber, can we do a roll call, please?
Quaker?
No.
Costello?
No.
LaCroy?
No.
Chapman? Olson?
Aye.
Wyffenbach?
No.
Kroger?
No.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Wa?
Aye.
That is, Dale Swatter Six.
Thank you, Amber. I guess the feeling that I'm getting through the council is like they'd like to go through this list, and to find what's important, but yet not, and come up with a number, and then come back at a later date. If the funding is there, then we, we make the appropriations at that time. Mayor Hanks, is that possible to do? I mean, could we come back and make appropriations in November? I, I think some of the stuff that we have up there, that, that's not necessary, we have to have it funded for 2010. We can't wait till April 1st to look at them and send them out. So, I got lights going up all over the place. Yeah.
The short answer is, is you could adopt a basic plan, the ordinance, and then come November, come December, as if you look at the revenues, you could do, I'm gonna look to Jason. We could do supplementals to the 2010 appropriation budget, as soon as the appropriation budget is adopted. Is that not correct? It's a little bit.
You can, but I think that Department of Legislative Audit likes to see as few of those as possible. Is it legally possible? Yes.
Next, I'll recognize Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe we're on supplemental appropriation number four, number five right now. So, I mean, I think we can come back and hire people whenever we want, if we're not, if I'm not mistaken. And so, I mean, we can do that. It doesn't have to be December, it can be January. I understand trying to get a full year of people under our belt if, if, if the money is there to hire them. But there are some FTEs that are in this budget, that I think that we have to make a motion to either approve, accept, or not, and I think that they are the cops, and, or no, not the cops, transit, civic center. So, I just think that at some point, we need to talk about those FTEs that are currently in the budget, or either take that, those spots and that money, appropriation out of the budget. So...
Well, Trace, Thursday I got in a note, can we reduce detoxes down to 15992?
Why is that, Lloyd?
We can, I'll ask Mr. Holloway. We can ask him questions. I'll recognize Mr. Holloway, Don Holloway, Sheriff Holloway.
There was some additional cuts taken by the county after I notified the council members of what the shortfalls were. So with, with this, with what is already in the budget, the city's budget plus this 15992, would provide the city's portion of the revenues to support the detox, as the county has approved that budget.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway. I'll recognize Karen Anderson Olsen.
Lloyd, would it be inappropriate to find out what things they eliminated that allowed to reduce that budget?
Sure. We, we reduced the, in the original budget, there was a 2% cost of living built into the budget, that was cut back to a 1%. And then, we eliminated a halftime nurse position at the city-county alcohol programs. And plus, I come up with some additional funding through the, through a state contract.
Well, I guess, I lost what the council wants to do here. I'll recognize Ron Kroger.
Sheriff, would you explain if we do not fund this, what it does to the county budget? Does it short you that amount too?
Sure. As, as most of you probably recall, the city-county drug and alcohol programs, funding on the part of the city is an equal match with what the county puts in for their share of it. Both of those, both of those amounts represent just a portion of the total budget for city-county drug and alcohol programs. The total budget is $2,478,133. So, a large portion of our funding for the detox program comes from services provided to, that we, that we get reimbursed from the state of South Dakota, from some federal programs that we implement there. So if we, and the money that we reuse, both the city's funds and the county's funds for detox, is used just for the detoxification component of city-county drug and alcohol programs. And so if we, if, if we don't get this close to $16,000, it would really amount to a $32,000 reduction in our budget, because there would be an equal match with, on the county side. Thus, it would be a reduction in the amount of beds that we would then be able to designate for detox at the facility. I'd have to reassign those beds to other, other programs, so that we could try to generate the funds from those other programs to support that budget.
Thank you, Don. I guess I'll just follow through, since we're on the subject. You know, I brought this one up, and I think it's important, you know, it is a matching fund field, and with all the discussion we've had with, with the downtown revitalizing, that detox is very important. If we lose any more beds, I think it, it really creates havoc in our, our man-down calls, not only with the police department, but with the fire department, which does increase the cost of service. So, I will, I'll make the motion to, to fund the 15992, and I'll, I'll stick with where I took it from, was the unencumbered cash fund. That'd be a motion I'd made. It's been a motion, second, to take, to fund detox, 15992, the unencumbered cash fund. Any discussion?
Yeah.
I'll recognize Alderman...
No, go ahead.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Mr. Sheriff, thank you. I, I, is this over and above what we've already, I mean, why is there a shortfall? I don't understand.
I can...
I'm not, I'm asking maybe more to the mayor, if he would be so much obliged to. I mean, if there's a $15,000 that wasn't included in the budget, $16,000.
You know what? I'm gonna pass these out, I think it's probably as good as ten seconds. If you go to the very back page, there's actually a graph that shows the funding, not only for the detox, but also the dispatch. We went back and looked at the dollar amount that we've actually been funding back to 2002. I'm sorry, Lloyd, you want to share? And I think let's just keep the discussion on the dispatch. And that is a fact, that if you look going back to 2002, so eight years ago, we started at $184,000, and the 2009 budget hit 426. Originally, I had, in the 2010, I had said no growth for all departments, so I'd actually plugged $426,000 in there. The chief came in and said that he was afraid that if we didn't see some increase, that beds would be taken away, so that's why the additional $12,000 was placed in there. I will, I will tell you that, on average, from 2002 to 2010, that's about a 12% annual increase, if you average it out, starting in 2002.
So now, if we had this on, that'd be over and above that. I think our, my colleagues need to consider this. I mean, I consider the fact that these increases have already been put into this budget. I, I mean, there's been several times that I've been on the council, that the counties actually cost us more than that, just by not coming to the table with us on certain occasions. It's unfortunate, but the rest of our, I mean, the rest of our, the city is looking at, I mean, the raises across the board for the employees are gonna be considerably lower. We've had to control costs to the utmost, and I understand the necessity of these items, but at the same point, if we've already, we've already put a 12% increase in for this year, this is above the 12% increase. So, that's what I have to say.
From, from the numbers I got, what was presented, detox has already taken a 2.2% That's, that's from the memo that I got. Is that correct?
I'm just going by what the mayor said, when we're talking about dispatch or...
Well, detox.
And that, we gave them a 12% increase?
No.
Or a 2%?
It's about a...
Maybe I'm def... Increase. So...
I'll recognize, oh, excuse me, Ron, Mr., I'll recognize Mr. Holloway.
Well, I think the mayor probably has his numbers correct. I mean, he's... I mean, if he's, I mean, if it's an increase, it's an increase. If it's not, it's not. I just wanna know what it is. So.
Mr. Holloway?
Thank you. I, I would, I do appreciate the opportunity to be able to explain why in 2002, the city only was assessed $184,726 for detox cost. If you look at, if you go back and look at what you, you actually budgeted that year, it would have been more than that. Likewise, the same would be true in some of the other years. I didn't bring all those other budgets. But one of the deals that I have with the city is that whatever, whatever the county puts in, the city puts in. And, and as I told you before, a large share of the money that we receive to operate detox comes from contracts or other services. We charge our clients if they have money. And if we, and, and sometimes we get people from out of, out of county that come and use our facility. And if those revenues generate enough revenues to support our operation, lo and behold, I reduce how much I charge the city. So, you're right. You got a hell of a deal in 2002. And in 2010, you might get a hell of a deal again if, if we can generate the revenue somewhere else. But this is the amount that's needed to support the budget to get us started with.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway, for the explanation. So, any further discussion? I'll recognize Vice President Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna tie this into the previous motion that was on the floor. I voted against it not because I thought it was a bad motion. I, I just think it's a little premature when we're still having discussion. I understand that we're trying to find money in the specific places in the budget. But when I look at it, I'm looking overall. I'm not gonna say, I'm gonna take this money from this spot specifically and then maybe have something come up just a little bit later, and then we say, well, we don't have money for that because we've already voted. So, and I'll give you an example. The doll came to us, or Linda Anderson, during the budget hearings and said that, that that building over there has expanded in size. And as a result, the utilities cost more. That's just the reality of life. I think that they're gonna be short in terms of utility cost next year. So, I mean, we haven't talked about that. We, well, did you talk about it last night?
No.
Okay. So, is that satisfied then? It's not satisfied. My, my point being, so is it more important to add something here than to take care of what's already there? Because what'll happen, someone, somewhere is gonna pay that utility bill if it's generated throughout the year. And what, I, I'm not sure who's gonna pay it, but I, I'm willing to bet that someone will come back before the council, and I'm just using that as an example. So, that's why I, I still think it's a little premature to actually vote on things to attach them to the appropriations that's on legal and finance tomorrow. So, that's my, and I will be voting against this one as well, not because I disagree that the money shouldn't be appropriated. I just think it's still a, a little premature to do that.
Any, any further comments? It's appearing to me that what the council wants to do is go down through the list, vote and see if each one should stay on the list, and then go back and see what the leftover money is and try to, to find the appropriate funding. It, you know, if, or if not, or hold off. But we kinda seem to be going back and forth. We want, we wanna identify, then we need to find the funding. So, what we'll do is we'll vote on this motion on the floor, and then we'll start from the top down and, and go down. So, the motion on the floor is to, to fund detox for $15,992 through the, yeah. An additional $15,990 out of the undesigned fund balance. Discussion, I'll recognize Alderman Deb Hadcock.
If we do this, I still feel that council contingency is easier to do a have-to than use an encumbered cash. Your $16,000, guys, I, I just think that it probably is an important issue. He does need the money, and council contingency is either easier than using encumbered cash at this point. I believe we're not gonna use all that. If we've used encumbered cash for snow removal before, why are we doing anything different this year or last year or the year before supposedly we used encumbered cash? So, but then that, never mind. That also puts the other sense that either way, we're ended up using encumbered cash, whether we use the $16,000 there or for snow removal later. So, maybe I'm...
Thank, well, I understand what Ms. Hadcock is saying, but after listening to what Mr. Holloway just said, you know, if more funding comes in, we get charged less, so it's not gonna be taken out of the encumbered cash. It'd be left where it is. So, the chances are, I, that's why if we have unencumbered, it's probably a good place for it at this point in time. Any further discussion? Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Just from a process standpoint, there was a motion made earlier that was voted down. So, now, are those two parks maintenance workers, are they struck from the list and that $75,000 shouldn't be in the 265 now?
No.
So, what are we voting on?
The motion was to take it from those funding. It, it wasn't to take it off the list.
Okay.
Aaron, did you have a comment? I'll recognize Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Council President. Just so I'm clear on, on the funds that we're voting on. This $438,000 plus the additional 16, this is the maximum amount that we could be charged for use of the detox center. And as was explained by Sheriff Holloway, that if they get funding sources from other places, that's essentially a discount for the city. Is that, am I clear on that? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? I mean, I'll, I'll recognize Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I support detox and continue to support detox. I do think that taking the $15,000 and $16,000 from unencumbered cash, which is effectively taking it from the property tax increase, is the wrong way, the wrong way to go. I penciled out several other things here that have been mentioned previously, and I would like to give some options for the sheriff and others to consider. One is, is we'll see how, how it goes on, hopefully the council follows through in the Public Works recommendation today to ask Cabela's to pay the property tax starting from the date that the vote was certified in 2007. If they do that, which I hope they do, I'm not sure they, they have to, but I think they should based on the certification of the vote. Based on Mr. Rittenberger, his comments in the journal, that would be 100, or that would be $142,000 over the last two years. It should be $71,000 a year. And the county's share of that alone, you know, would, would cover, you know, would be $47,880. So, those are some, that's an alternative. And I would ask, I would hope that the sheriff and county commission, also school board, would all, would all stand together and ask that the right thing be done relating to Cabela's paying the property taxes that they owe Pennington County and Rapid City. Another option would be, as has been discussed before, reduce the subsidies, subsidy budget, I'm sorry, I didn't say subsidy budget. I meant to say reduce the council contingency budget for '09 and '10, or in 2010. Also, we could look at the interdepartmental transfer from growth management, which was $208,000. We could take 100 or 150 of that. And then we could look at the 40-some percent travel increase for mayor and council travel, which amounts to about $11,000 and use that as well. So, there are other alternatives. I think that taking this, this money from unencumbered cash, which is taking it from the property tax increase, we are taking fruit from the poison tree. I would encourage us not to, to pass this particular motion, but to instead look at other alternatives and also to, as I had said before, take a look at where our sales tax comes in through the remainder of the year and address this entire list in the spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. I'll recognize Alderman Ron Wyeth.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. I, I'm not against funding the, from the Cabela's. But I understand that Cabela's is in a TIF, so it doesn't matter anyway. That, that money won't come to Rapid City for a minimum of 20 years. So, even if we, even if they did pay those property taxes, it would just go back. And the, and the county would just be, would lose the $47,000 anyway. I mean, so, I don't think that that's an option. But, I mean, I, I think if we either go up or down on this vote and then move on to, like, should we put it on the, should we put it on our shortlist or not, and then decide how we're gonna fund it? It might be a little bit more appropriate because what may happen is, is that we may wanna fund something, but we may or may not want it to come out of that particular reserve or whatever fund it is. So, I, thank you.
I, I agree with Mr. Wyeth. I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna withdraw my motion. And the reason why I wanna withdraw my motion is I think we need to get through the list, identify how much, what's important to this council. Once we get through that list, then we'll have a number, then we can start finding the funding and, and take it jointly to try and fund everything. If we can't do that, then we need to make a shortlist to fund what we can. That's kind of the consensus I'm getting to from the council, unless anybody has another suggestion besides that. So, I will withdraw my motion if it's okay with the secondary, which is Ron. Ron, it's okay for me to... I'm withdrawing my motion so we can go back to it. Okay. So, that's what we're gonna do. So, we'll start out at the top of the list. And what we'll do is we'll take a vote on whether or not to keep it on the list or not. So, first on the list is the two parks maintenance workers. Discussion, I'll, I'll recognize Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Maybe the motion should be ma-made if we wanna fund anything on the list. And we just wanna take the CPI, put it in encumbered cash, and be done with the budget and improve it like it is. Because I'm not really getting anybody wanting to change anything on here. So, unless somebody has a different suggestion, maybe we oughta just move forward on that. And that would be my motion, instead of going through a list, unless people are really serious about changing something on there. It would be to not change anything, put it, leave it in the encumbered cash where it is. And, and I think when you're doing a budget, the best thing to do is wait till the, till you see what the numbers are for this year. And then, when you're doing a budget, if you have money in that budget during the year, Kroger made a good point, then bring those people forward and bring those storybook island or one-time people on, by the way, our numbers look. So, at this point, I didn't wanna change any of it. Just leave it like it is and put the encumbered cash where it is and be done with it. That'd be my motion. Just leave it like this.
Motion's been made to accept the mayor's budget as presented. Isn't that one? Well, pretty much, it's, it's to accept the mayor's budget as presented, and we're not approving none of the unfunded. And we, we've already approved... Yeah.
And we take the suggestion and if, if during the year we need that money for something that's a have-to and we have it in our budget, then instead of taking money and trying to fix it right now, maybe we don't wait until 2010 until we can figure out that cash flow and whatnot.
Amount should be...
Okay.
Tomorrow, it's first reading.
No. Well, just, just...
Just to clarify the motion. The motion was to not fund anything on the list, leave it as is. CPI is in the undesignated fund already, so the motion would be, don't fund anything at this point. Leave the CPI where it's at and go to first reading.
So, basically, I guess, I'm, I'm looking at Jason and the finance office. We could still come back through the rest of the year and fund. They'd have to come back separately and ask for funding. I'll, I'll recognize Jason Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I understand what's, what's being suggested here, it's that the decisions that you've made to this point be incorporated into first reading of the budget ordinance and that any further discussion about those matters happen at first reading. So, in order to accomplish that, I think all you need to do is adjourn. And the finance office will go forward and prepare the budget in that way for first reading. If you wanna make more changes than some other motion, certainly would be in order.
Wow. All right. For, motion's been made and seconded. I'll, for discussion, I'll recognize...
Mr. Chairman, I think that we're making a simple motion complicated. I think to stick with our process, a motion's been made to not fund any of those items and, and move forward. The, any discussion on the CPI, which took place yesterday, the CPI at that point was motioned to be taken and put into unencumbered cash.
Yes.
Other than that, I think we don't wanna convolute a simple motion that was made, and I think it would be appropriate for us to vote on that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Hold on. Oh, I'll recognize Bill Wall.
Okay, let's keep it simple then. So, the motion is, the council added list, which is similar to the mayor's suggested unfunded list, has two items, the shortfall for dispatch and the shortfall for detox. It really doesn't matter. Both lists are going away. Is that correct? Okay. I'm ready to vote.
Any further discussion? I'll recognize Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. President. First reading is tomorrow at legal and finance as what the mayor proposed. So, there will, I guess, what, what happened last night will somehow be attached to that either tomorrow or at the council, at some stage along the way. It seems tomorrow it'll be attached to that. I think that still, as I said earlier, there needs to be some sort of motion, and it doesn't have to come tonight, to accept or approve those FTEs that are in there because I think they still have to be acknowledged or approved somehow. Like, that's my understanding. Is that correct? I'm looking at our finance office.
The council at some point needs to approve the FTEs. It is not part of the appropriation ordinance.
Okay. At some time, okay, so... If, if we do what Councilmember Hadcock is, and basically what we're doing is adjourning. That's what we're doing because nothing has changed since, since we got here at 5:30, basically. So, we still have the reserve to come and add things or change this tomorrow or second reading or at the council? Then I'm fine with the motion.
I, I will make a comment is I, I don't think it's good business. I think we got some people here that are waiting for it to see if it's gonna happen. And now, we're gonna have discussion between the naval and finance and, and through the council meeting. I, I think there is some very important and things that need to be discussed that are up on the list. And so, we haven't even gone through and discussed what's actually really important to this council. From, from the gathering is they're saying nothing's important, just like what was presented to us. So, that's my feeling on it, so I won't be voting in favor of the motion on the floor. Any further discussion on the floor? I recognize Ron Wyeth.
Mr. Sheriff, I respectfully disagree with your scenario there. I think that it is important. We spent two days talking about it. We've come to a conclusion that we're gonna vote on whether we wanna not fund anything today and, and, and move forward and, and go with our first reading and then, and if there is opportunity that we need to rediscuss this, I think that there's been up, the fact's been brought up, we've had five appropriations this year. I think that there's very, very significant issues that we're talking about. And we're talking about the opportunity for sales tax revenues to either be there or not be there. And this gives us an opportunity to be realistic. And I, so I think that it, what we've done is a lot of hard work and we, and we have accomplished something by, uh, having a vote. And it may or may not pass, I'm not sure, whatever is on everybody's mind, but we'll find out.
Okay. And that, and from my understanding, after this vote, if it, if it passes, then we're done with the budget, it's all done. No, I meant for, for us to come together in the roundtable meeting. Okay. Motion, motion on the floor is, please repeat that for me again. Listen to me. Okay. With the inclusion of the CPI. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Um, all in favor and to get by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Motion carries with one, no. The move to adjourn, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. So now we have a meeting tomorrow night, right?